Seven ten P.M. I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order for the Village of North Hudson. And we'll have a short invocation. Dear Lord, please guide us in our decision-making for this body as we deal with the everyday dealings of the village and when we're concerned with our taxpayers. And please give us wisdom to make the right decisions. And we thank you for watching over us. Roll call, please.
Trustee Head?
Here.
Leaf?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Wicken?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Zappa?
Okay. Item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of twenty-eight March and the re-arg meeting of eighteen April. Have a motion?
No motion.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any corrections or amendments to the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number three, comments from the four, is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Jim?
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be brief. It looks like you've got a lot going on, so you've got more important things than listening to me. But I just wanted to touch on the fact that I did take a little road trip over to Ellsworth, Wisconsin, and presented our request for approval to the Senate and the Joint House Committee, or the Joint Committee on Finance, and we hope it was received really well. So basically, this is once I'm not here to ask for anything, don't need any money. Do, I could use a resolution just to show community support, but that'll be on the next agenda. With that, it's been a really busy week, and there is going to be a fantastic, hopefully, hopefully fantastic article in the Hudson Star Observer tomorrow that covers a lot of the history of what's been going on up at Little Falls. Also, a request for everybody, municipality, community members, board, anybody, to go on the lakemallaloo.com website. And if you haven't already, if you're in support of replacing this dam, just reach out. It's just a simple click paste. Send a little note off to our representatives, and it makes a difference. So we're just sort of reaching out for that. We're also going to be on River Channel on TV Friday at seven, Saturday morning at seven a.m., and then Sunday at five. It sort of gives a little background if anybody's got nothing better to do this weekend. It should be informative. And at this point, we just simply have our fingers crossed that this gets voted in, and we will move forward from that point, but that's the foundation for everything.
Jim, what times were those on River Channel?
The River Channel's going to be on Channel fifteen Friday night at seven P.M., Saturday morning at seven a.m., and then Sunday evening at five P.M. I think I've got that right. I might have the Saturday and Sunday mixed up, but I'm pretty close. But yeah, it was a really good interview, and yeah. And I just really, I just want to say how proud I am of being a part of this community, to be able to reach out and not have things fall on deaf ears. It's been great to work with Hudson, Town of Hudson, North Hudson, and get the support that we have. And I'm just glad I've got a little bit of extra time on my hands and am able to do something that I think is right for, I think that the majority of the people would feel that this is right. So anyway, I want to get Little Falls Lake back in. Ultimately, we hope to get Malalo cleaned up in the Willa River and get kids catching their first fish on these beautiful bodies of water. So it's all good stuff.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions?
Thank you very much.
Will you need anything from me to ...?
No, we'll do the proclamation next month.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Hearing none. On to item four, North Hudson Elementary Fund Run, Wednesday, May twenty-four, 2017. Authorization to temporarily close roads around the school, approval requested. Is there a motion?
Stan, I will motion authorize traffic restrictions on Webster Street North from Lemon Street North to Helen Street North, and Helen Street North from Webster Street North to Monroe Street North, and Monroe Street North to Helen Street North into Lemon Street North.
I wish to repeat that, Ted.
To the North Hudson Elementary School Fund Run. So there's a lot of norths in there. And this is on Wednesday, May twenty-four, 2017, from two forty-five P.M. to three P.M. with a alternate rain date, which hopefully it does not rain, of Wednesday, May thirty-first, 2017, from two forty-five P.M. to three thirty P.M.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any other discussion? How many years have we been doing this, Chief?
I want to say five.
Okay. And we've had zero point zero incidents?
Zero problems.
Okay. Okay, without any other discussion, all in favor, assuming by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. I gotta go back. Item five is, oops. Clerk's motion. I gotta, it's the, it is clerk week, May seventh. The Municipal Clerk Week proclamation is for May seventh through May thirteenth, and is whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world as the oldest profession among public servants. And whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at local county and state levels. And whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all residents through transparency and accountable government practices. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as information center on functions of the local government and community. And whereas the one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four municipal clerks and seventy-two county clerks contribute to the election administration by attending required training and dedicating themselves to providing fair, non-biased, nonpartisan, accurate, and responsible elections in Wisconsin. And whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual conferences across Wisconsin. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I stand, Wicken, Village President of the Village of North Hudson, do recognize the week of May seventh through May thirteenth, and as municipal clerk's week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Melissa Lutke, and all municipality, or municipal clerks, for the vital service that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the commission that they represent. And I would like to thank you, Melissa, personally, for the great job you do. You make our job a lot easier, and we definitely appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. After reading the whereses, bar. Wow. Okay. So we don't, that's just proclamation, so do we have to do, all in favor of the proclamation, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item six, application for conveyance of land filed by Ty Dodge and Oth Consulting and Associates and D.C.C.I. Investments LLC, approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the application for conveyance of land between the adjoining properties of D.C.C.I. Investments LLC at twelve five eight Tenth Street North and Derrick Holmes LLC at twelve sixty-four Tenth Street North?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's first? Kirk?
Second here.
Kirk's name on there, okay. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none. It's just a woman, a little piece of property, so hearing all in favor of the application, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. New business from the board or staff. First of all, President's comments. First thing I would like to do is there, every, well, the week of, let's see, May sixteen, or May sixteenth, there's a, gonna be a, the law officers, River Valley Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Ceremony, Tuesday, May sixteenth, at 2017, at six P.M. There's a ceremony that will be held at River Falls High School located at eight eighteen Cemetery Road. Every year, too many officers make the ultimate sacrifice while doing their jobs. In 2016, one hundred and forty-three officers were killed in the line of duty. This ceremony will pay tribute to these officers, as well as recognize the contributions of all the officers who worked in St. Croix, Pierce, and Pepin Counties. Please join us on the sixteenth, or May sixteenth, National Law Enforcement Officers' Week at six P.M. to honor all these brave men and women. And refreshments follow this ceremony, and this is respectfully submitted by River Valley Law Enforcement Partners, Gordon Young, Chief of Police of River Falls Police Department. And personally, I have been to these, I mean, every last, you know, few mayes, I mean, it is a very, very nice ceremony, and to honor those that have given the ultimate sacrifice, you know, in the line of duty. I know the chief is very much involved with this group, and it is, hopefully, if you can have time on the sixteenth of May down at River Falls High School at six P.M., you would join us for the ceremonies. Next thing I'd like to, you know, is this coming weekend is fishing opener in Wisconsin. It's a big deal for a lot of folks, and I hope everybody has a safe fishing opener. And following that, the following week, we'd like to say Happy Mother's Day to all mothers out there that, which will be Minnesota's fishing opener, and I don't know how they've got away with that for that many years. But we appreciate all of our mothers and hope you have a great day there. And then finally, the end of the month is Memorial Day, where we honor fallen soldiers and servicemen from throughout the many wars that we have been in. And there's always a very nice service up at the Hudson Willa River Cemetery, usually at ten o'clock on that Monday, but you should do a very nice job. But other than that, Gloria?
I have two items. First, as some of you may or may not remember, I have been progressively turning things over to the staff. Melissa has now moved into the administrator's office and serving in that role. And Nathan is the treasurer, and I will be serving as support staff until we can get a position kind of clarified and deputy clerk, deputy treasurer, part-time in the front. So the second item is to let you know that one of our officers had swerved a Missa deer and come in contact with a tree. The vehicle has been totaled. Our insurance coverage covers for a new car replacement, and so we will be able to get a brand-new squad or unmarked, or for a five hundred dollar deductible is all that the village will have to, because we pay for that in our monthly premiums.
Fully built-out squad or just the car?
I, oops, go ahead.
Training slash investigative vehicle, so it's got some lights and a radio. It's not a, doesn't have a cage and all of that equipment.
But you're using from the old, the past, the last car?
We use a majority of the equipment from the past car.
They can, yeah. Oh, that's, is that?
Sorry.
No, that's like, okay, we'll get that one. Melissa, you said you had some comments?
Yes. There's something that came to my attention today that I was not aware of. So for any residents that may have chickens on their property, it is mandatory with the State of Wisconsin to have a premises registration. This is important in the event of an animal disease outbreak, so they know where an infection may have originated and what animals have been exposed to control the disease more quickly. There is a link on the village website under News and Events. This link provides registration information and can help answer any questions you may have. There is no charge for registering your premises. That's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa. Chicken registration. I'll let you know, I'll let everyone know how that goes. And I'll be down in Madison next week. Next on the agenda is plant commission, and I don't believe that they met. And then item nine, Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations, claim of approval requested. Is there a motion for to pay our bills?
Yes, Stan, can I move to approve the May two thousand seventeen non-recurring claims of twenty-seven thousand seventy dollars and thirty-eight cents, please?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kathy. Is there any comments or questions on the charges? Hearing none, and it's a payment issue. Kathy? Yay?
My first one.
Yeah, no, that's, I should have started to their right, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. On item B, assignment of unassigned funds for the future purchase of Public Works vehicle and Police Department squad car, approval requested. Or motion?
Stan, may I move to authorize the village administrator to transfer ten thousand to the Public Works truck assigned fund and ten thousand to the Police Department vehicle assigned fund from the unassigned fund balance?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any discussion?
Could we use with, if you needed a little more money to upgrade the vehicle because you're missing stuff, could we use this for it? Or is this just for specifically new vehicles?
It's really meant for new vehicles. It's to keep the rotation going, so that by the end of the four years or five years, there's enough built into that fund, so a complete squad can be adjusted.
Isn't it three?
I'm just gonna get them deer, mill deer sirens on the cars or something like that. But yeah, so, and this is, and we've done this, you know, to try to keep from taking the big hit, you know what I mean? All of a sudden say, hey, we need a car, you know, we're gonna have to borrow a lot.
Yeah, we don't do loans for those types of purchases.
Okay, so that was, so is there a motion? Do we have a motion? We have a second, so Kirk?
Yes.
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 I'm here for God to have a vote. Okay. Item C.
All good.
Thank you. Item C is a fire contract, approval requested. Just, as a note, we discussed this at length in Finance, and there's still some issues on, in the contract that we would like to clarify and see if we can change, you know, and, but, so we did not forward it for, to approve the contract per our counsel. We are under contract with them from the two sixteen, twenty sixteen contract, and we're on a five-year rolling average, so we're still under, they still will cover us for fire until we can get this one knocked out. So item D is a request from Hudson Fire Department to purchase ladder truck. Discussion possible actions is at its table because that is part of the contention with the contract. And item C is, or E is EMS contract and service options, discussion only. As everyone knows, the, we have a presentation to try to determine, or to show how the funding of the St. Croix EMS would be if they wanted, if we remained with St. Croix EMS and not sell to health partners. Correct, Nathan?
Correct. Stan, can we go back to the fire contract?
Uh...
You said there were some issues with it?
With the contract.
Yep.
It got tabled in Finance, so it's tabled here.
There'll be further discussion. I mean, it's, question?
No, I'm just wondering why it got tabled. I wasn't part of that discussion, so...
Oh, because it, well, with the, the purchase of a ladder truck and other assets, we're still not sure how we're funding those?
Gotcha.
And that was...
One million dollar aspect of it.
Yeah.
Got it.
And that's what could cover that. Sorry, I mean, I should have, I should have explained better.
Yep. Wasn't part of the conversation, so I was just wondering why it got tabled.
No, that's on me. I should have explained a little better on what it was, but, okay, Nathan, you're up.
For anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Nathan Traister. I'm the village treasurer here. And as Stan said, we, I am going to be discussing an analysis of the current funding allocation of the St. Croix EMS. So the current model is that EMS is partially funded through four neighboring communities, Village of North Hudson, the City of Hudson, Town of Troy, and the Town of Hudson. And it's on a per capita basis. So in 2017, our current rate is fourteen dollars per person, per municipality. And over the next five years, there is a proposed gradual increase of up to twenty-seven, twenty-five per capita. And as you can see down here, we have the current 2017 rate, and then over the next previous, or the next few years, it gradually increases up to twenty-seven, twenty-five. This is because of the fund, the current deficits, there's a Ward Avenue building, and staffing So the following are the current and proposed contributions to the St. Croix EMS per municipality starting in 2017 through 2022. It's based on this model, it appears the contribution ratio over the next five years stays relatively the same. I'll get this, into this on the next slide. But down here, you see, this is the total amount that St. Croix EMS needs to operate every year. And because of the increase per capita, it goes considerably up until 2022. And the village's contribution will, would go up from twenty-two thou, or fifty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight to a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. So this is the breakdown of how we currently pay for the services. This is the City of Hudson. They have fifty percent of the population, so they pay for fifty percent of the EMS. And we are the yellow with thirteen percent. And in 2022, the percentages change, but not by much, not by enough to change the actual percentage, percentages themselves. And so this is the actual usage that all municipalities have had on a five-year average. So between 2012 and 2016, North Hudson used nine percent of the services, as opposed to the Town of Troy, which uses three, the Town of Hudson uses seventeen, and the City of Hudson pays seventy-one percent.
Used it seventy-two percent.
Yes.
Paid seventy-two, paid fifty percent, but used it seventy-two percent of the time.
Correct. I will be getting into this as well.
Can we go back?
Sure. Which one?
No, right there.
This one?
Nope, one more.
One more.
Nope, forward.
Oh, sorry. This one?
Yeah. Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And then we were here. So the current proposed future cost for each municipality is divided by the five-year run average, which gives you a per run call. The five-year run average is a good indicator on what each municipality will have for run calls per year. And the Village of North Hudson pays for thirteen percent of the services and uses nine percent of those services. In comparison, the City of Hudson pays for forty-nine to fifty percent of the services and uses seventy-one percent. So this is the breakdown of the current model per run call. The Village of North Hudson pays four hundred and twenty-two dollars. The Town of Troy and the Town of Hudson pay in excess of five hundred dollars, and the City of Hudson pays a hundred and ninety dollars per run call. And because of the increases, by 2022, the Town of Troy and the Town of Hudson will go to right around a thousand dollars per EMS call. The Village of North Hudson will go up to eight hundred and twenty-one dollars per EMS call, and the City of Hudson will go up to three hundred and seventy-eight dollars per run call. The per run call difference is due to the different methodology based on using, based on usage as opposed to population. So if, I think the City of Hudson, one in every fourteen people, there's one EMS call per year, and the Village of Hut, North Hudson has one person for every thirty people. So that's what causes the difference between the run call amount and the usage. So the current and proposed contributions show, this shows it in a bar graph, so we're yellow still, and this is the, both the towns, and this is the City of Hudson. And over the next five years, it's going to gradual, steadily increase to the numbers that I showed you earlier. So there's different ways to approach the funding. The following slides are an analysis of what would happen if EMS was to be funded in different ways. We can start with doing what would happen if we solely used a five-year run average. And then we can look at a hybrid model, which is a fifty-fifty, which is very similar to our fire contract. The fifty-fifty model would use fifty percent of the payment would be from per capita, and fifty percent would be based on per run call. So is there any questions at this point? Okay. As you saw earlier, the usage of EMS services and what, whatever municipality uses is not proportionate. An average by run calls would allow municipalities to pay an amount based on their actual usage. So this is what every municipality would pay every year for their, per run call. So it goes from two hundred and seventy-four dollars to five hundred and forty-two dollars. And what that would mean is every year, it would settle the increase for every municipality equally. And this is in comparison to the current model, which has every municipality paying a different amount per actual usage of the services. So the Village of North Hudson would pay nine, for nine percent of the funding, as opposed to the thirteen that they are currently paying. This would change the total amount paid by North Hudson over the next five years to as follows. So the stop line is the current costs of, in the current model. This is the five-year average model, and this would be the cost savings over the next five years, which gets us to right around a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars by 2022. So the fifty-fifty allocation model is fifty percent run calls, fifty percent per capita. This would create a slightly more equitable allocation to municipalities based on their actual usage, but it would also mitigate potential risk if a municipality had a odd number of run calls in a given year or in a multiple-year span. And the following reflects the costs involved with it. So the Village of North Hudson would pay three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Both the towns would be right around four hundred, and the City of Hudson would be at two hundred and thirty-two dollars. And this would increase until 2022, where everyone's, where both the towns are right around eight hundred, we're around seven, and the City of Hudson's about five. So this is a little hard to read, but this is how it would be calculated. You take our population, you multiply it by the per capita rate that they give us, and you take half of that, and that gives you half of our funding. And the other fifty percent would, you would take our average EMS run calls divided by the total number of calls to get a percentage, and you multiply that by their operating amount, which is thirty-eight, or three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then you cut that in half, and you get our second fifty percent to get a gross annual fee of forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. So what this would mean is that everyone's contributions would change every year, and North Hudson would go from forty-three thousand and gradually increase to eighty-five thousand. And as you can see, all the... And as you can see, all the funding remains the same for a given year. And this is a graph showing where we're right here, and everyone's going up, and it's very similar to the current model, only it's more compressed, the differences between the high end and the low end, which is shown here, where this is this current EMS model, and this is the 50/50 model. And everyone's getting a little bit closer together all the way through. And the total cost savings would be from 2018 through 2022 would be $73,970. Okay, any questions?
And that took into account a, some, some number for population increase?
Yes. Yes. To get that, it was a lot of math. Basically, I took the projected population divided by the current population to get an increase of percentage, and then I multiplied that by the, by the number of run calls, which would be a good indicator on how many they're going to be going up by.
Okay.
And, and part of the reason for showing this is that, you know, they, you know, they, if you've watched the Hudson City Council, and this is, it's a big, big, these are big numbers with, and it's an increase in staffing down at, at, you know, for Hudson EMS. And this is, what we're, what we're trying to look at is to get, make it more equitable for, for the village, I mean, if we're not, you know, you know, to pay for the services. Again, we don't have, this is, you know, we will present this, you know, I mean, I'll, you know, show these numbers to the partners and stuff, and, because we've tried over the years to get to, you know, to get a change, you know, rather than the per capita, I mean, because, you know, I mean, the people that are using it, that have, you know, you know, whether it's senior housing or whatever, you know, there's just more calls in a, in a city like that, and I think, to be fair, it should be, you know, I mean, to the taxpayers, because a lot of them will say, well, you know, they said on television, we don't have, North Hudson and the city, or the Town of Hudson have trouble affor, are gonna have trouble affording this down the road, and we, in which we all have looked at and pretty much know that. So, all right, help us afford it, you know, and that's what we want to try to, you know, stress at those meetings. So, you know, will they change? I mean, we've been trying for a while, so, but this is an opportunity for the people to see, it's like, hey, we've got, you know, you don't, tell me your problem, well, we're showing you a possible answer, you know, so hopefully this will, if they do decide to keep the St. Croix EMS the way they are, this would help us afford that. I mean, and I think it's a good, it'd be good for the village.
Can you go back to number three, page three? And just to add to that, if you're looking between 17 and 18 with the proposed plan, that's a $20,000 increase for the village. Our net new construction last year increase that we are allowed to increase the levy by was $6,300. And out of 24, that leaves about a $14,000 deficit we would have to cut internally, operating in order to, to attain that as it currently stands.
And if we went to the per run model, between 17 and 18?
It's... So we would be, next year, we would be paying less than we are currently.
That would deal with that?
Please, where the numbers are.
I think we need to, too, keep in mind that they do provide a service and they do have some ground base expenses that needs to be somewhat considered. So just keeping that in mind.
Right.
When do you present this to the, the next?
Yeah, we're planning sharing with the...
Do you know when that is?
I do not right now. I do not right now. I don't know where we were talking about.
Will it be at a town or a City of Hudson Board Meeting that will present this, or?
It would go through EMS, you know, the advisory committee.
Can you let us know, because I'd like actually show up and listen in to that.
It's like 7:30 in the morning.
That's all right.
I'll, as soon as I know about the next meeting, I'll see if we can get it, you know, we'll have to probably go across the street to the fire hall because the EMS conference room won't hold extra people, but, no, it's, it's, you know, and they don't know this is probably, I mean, other than if they're watching this meeting, they don't know this is coming, but it is, you know...
If, if more than two of you are gonna attend any of these meetings, you should talk to Melissa about it. We should, we might have to notice it as a potential meeting.
For, you know, walking, or they have that walking meeting?
Not technically a walking forum, but it could be a forum.
Right. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, I'll impose it that way. I'll find out when that next meeting is, so. Because they have been moving them around to fit the chief schedule and stuff like that, because it makes a difference, so.
Nathan, thank you for putting these numbers together. It's solid presentation.
It's a lot easier than presenting it.
Always, second time. There's always truth in numbers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Nathan. Again, it was well done, and, and hopefully, we can get them to listen. Okay, that ends personal. And Finance, number 10, is Public Works Committee Recommendations Chair Update. Brian?
Public Works did meet, and we went over a lot of future projects that are coming all the way out to 2021 and what's gonna take to get them done, but we have nothing to bring forward at this time.
Thank you, Brian. Public Safety, Mark?
We met, but there were no action items, Stan.
Thank you. Public Welfare, don't believe met. And Park Board Committee, I don't think there was any recommendations coming out of there either. Remember Kirk?
Oh, they just had the, they're gonna, they suggested purchasing the three grasses, but we're gonna do just one, and it's just $50 a new to see if we can get better grass to grow in certain areas. But that's it, and the sign was gonna go up, but too high water, or did you get the sign in? The sign for the...
Ferry landing?
Ferry landing sign? Was the water too high?
We just got it today.
Okay. Yep. We're gonna plant that once we can.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank Colleen for the easy adjustment. She really kind of handed me everything, so hopefully I could stay in her shoes and do a wonderful job. 11 years.
Yeah. We appreciate it that you're, you know, stepping in there, and, yeah, it's a, it's an important part of the village, and I know you'll do a good job at that. Okay, next would be, the board may convene into closed session, but we don't have any information on that to, regarding the municipal garage. So the final item on my agenda is adjournment, and I'd say we are adjourned at 7:48.